I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start off with the roll call. Dan Rottinghouse.
Here.
John Estridge.
Yep.
Bridgette Hayes. Curtis Ward, who doesn't seem to be here. Rick Whitaker.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Let's start off with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting as written. From June 3rd. John made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Okay, I wasn't here.
Rick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
Dan abstained. Motion carried. Next is approval of the claims. The claims, $717,633.59. Was there a big expenditure this month?
So, one of the expenditures was a payment to Overa for the CC engine payment. So, 75%, they did do, there was some overages on some curb that we had to make the street level with the ADA rail, so we had to pick up that extra. So, the 75% from the state was 187, 1962, and then our portion was $66,501.56. It counts that $66,000 almost twice because I have to transfer it from NPH restricted to the CC engine fund for the distribution, so I kind of feel like it's a little bit inflated due to that one. Also, the almost $89,000 grant payment to full group food conserving old street grant. That's strictly publicity.
Thank you. Any questions for Gina on the claims? I'm going to take a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the payroll.
So, I made a mistake on that. There's a second sheet to the payroll because I forgot. After we updated the ordinance for the back course employees, I had to pay an old rate and a new rate, and I missed one of the old rates on the employee employees, so there's a little bit, a second sheet now.
Okay. So, the first sheet is $62,245.75, and the second sheet is $118, and that includes $743.83 for overtime. Is there a motion to approve payroll?
Make that motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is Brad Blades, the speed, sorry, Brad Blades with his issue with speeding on St. Mary's Road, right outside of town on the bridge, after the bridge. He's concerned about speeding, and I was wondering how the council felt about any measures. I have a couple ideas myself, but wanted to hear from everybody else on how they felt about that issue with speeding.
Rocky and Terry and I talked a little bit about it, and Rick, and we thought about a combination of signs and enforcement, radar control, personally enforce something along those lines, and silver plate, police load down among with us, they've been doing, patrolling out there and giving out warnings.
Does anyone else have a?
Maybe signs that says strictly enforced with radar, the speed with the flag, the solar lights around the sign to where it gets your attention. You have to put them on those stop signs, that sort of, sort of like the crosswalks to where you can see them, because I actually did speak to him, and I spent probably maybe an hour, hour and fifteen minutes talking to him about it and just watching what was going on in there. More than not with speed. And you've got houses that maybe maximum is 20 foot off the road, so there's no room for air, and you've got little kids playing, you have elderly people pulling out of driveways, and I think the signs like that, maybe if it comes down to it, maybe a stop sign break up the speed, but start off with the other sign and, you know, monitor it and see if something else needs to be done.
So, I went to a NDOT safety meeting in Seymour a week and a half ago, and one of the things that they suggested as a, as a measure to help stop speeding is, is a thing called transverse rumble strips. So, you know those rumble strips on the sides of roads and kind of in the median, you know, to help people stay on the road? Well, there's a thing called transverse which are in the middle of the road, and when you go over them, it kind of, you know, lets you know as a driver something's happening, and they suggested that those might be helpful when speeds change from one to another, especially, you know, from a higher speed to a lower speed. And the only issue, I guess, is in the past is those rumble strips are awful loud, and so when you put them next to housing developments, the neighbors don't like that. But they have developed a different kind of rumble strip where it still alerts the driver, but it's not as loud, you know, outside the car, and so I was wondering if the council felt like maybe we could possibly look into that and put in them at the, Tim said, wake up the dead, not the living, which means put it at the cemetery to, to slow them down as they come in, because one of the things that the NDOT people said is that speed limits don't do a lot to make people slow down, but if you do different kinds of measures on the road to make people think they should slow down, then that helps them slow down, like rumble strips or putting, I talked about little bump outs, which is like little, sorry, I'm not explaining this very well, but, you know, concrete things that come out a little bit, it kind of constricts the lane so that they think, ooh, maybe I should slow down a little bit, but those are other types of safety measures that they suggested might work. They also talked about, and I don't know if Rocky would go for this, but they call it a speed hump, and it's not a speed bump, which is, you know, I don't know, this thing, a speed hump is like over like maybe three or four feet, it's more of a gradual.
They call them speed tables.
Speed table, thank you. We might think of, because those are our roads, those are not county roads, and we don't have to ask permission from anybody, and we, we could possibly think about doing that as well.
Well, the fact that snow, remove the snow, the waves.
That's why I didn't know if Rocky would go for that, or, or that would impact.
I don't think that has any impact on snow removal because they're just not, they're not high, not like speed bump or anything, so I don't think there's any impact at all for, obviously, snow.
The other thing that I found out was that there's this office in NDOT, it's called the LTA?
LTAP.
LTAP, thank you, and LTAP, and they have equipment that communities can rent, not rent, but have for free for temporary periods, and one of the things they had is a sign that talked about, well, one of those things that say, this is your speed, and I asked the LTAP office if we could borrow some, and she's like, well, we usually get them on the twos, so you can have them for four weeks, and so if the council is, likes that idea, we could pass that and at least put those two out for two weeks, at least to let people know we're watching you, and then maybe see if Rocky can get some quotes to do rumble strips and/or speed humps and see what he says about maybe what that would do, and then maybe incorporate some, some more of these signs that you talked about.
When that thing's due, and I've seen plenty of places, do they actually record the number of vehicles that come and how many are out of that, what's the percentage of speed?
The sign that says what your speed is?
Yeah.
Yes, she did talk about.
Does count the cars, and then tell you the percentage of how many of the vehicles were actually speeding.
I'm sorry.
Taking your direction to go.
She talked about some kind of data that we could pull down from it, I'm not exactly sure what kind, but she did say you can get that from like a computer download or something on the sign, and that would be helpful.
Maybe give you a better idea of what direction we need, we need to head to slow down, and a month study, I mean, I think you're gonna.
Find something.
I think you're gonna, yeah.
So, those are my ideas, so whatever the council wants to do.
I think combination of all of them, I think would be fine.
So, we'll ask Rocky about the transverse rumble, rumble strips and the speed hump?
At some time, in some period of time, we have to enforce whatever we need. I mean, I had an issue a month ago down at the taxi company, them coming out, and over a length of gray traffic, a lot of seniors driving in and out of the fence, and I saw police, they came down, stopped the taxi person, saved one day since, so they're not going to enforce this stuff, please, it's really always. I think we need to tell the police chief and the door that that was a priority, speaking if, if we want to support, because we really don't want to be a town on for speeding, catching speed, but I think it needs to be made a priority if we're gonna hang on these traffic over and stuff, that's just my opinion.
Agreed, that would be helpful. Okay, so.
And I like those ideas.
Okay, so, and when you talk about the signs, do you, are you more apt to, what type of, more additional signs are, do you think we should put?
Speed strictly, you know, radar, enforced, or just something that will get their attention, and I think lights on it would get their attention more.
In ones.
Maybe wanted this end, like, I don't know, around the bar cards where they're coming, where it strays out, and then right at the turns going before you, or when you come across a bridge.
So, both signs, both directions?
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is, I think needs to happen only on both sides, because they was, they was coming through either direction.
Pretty fast.
Some of them, some of them rolled.
Okay, okay, we'll look into that, I'll, I'll see if Rocky will do that too.
You know, Oxford, Oxford, that's those numbers forever, and they're still, maybe in Oxford, you know, you'll see you're going there to slow down.
Yes.
People slam on their brakes and make sure they're not speeding.
I could get your attention.
Those would work, in my own personal opinion, so I, I would be, like, speed, speed table, I think would be a good idea. The rumble strips, probably those, and we went through on the highway with curbs, those are noisy for people, and if those houses are that close, that's the road there, that's going to be a follow-up, I think, I think there's, there's better, there's a lot of ways.
And then I guess the way that we would figure this out is, is maybe talk to Mr. Blades like after a month and see if he sees, sees some kind of difference, I think that would be good, and then one of the other things I learned at this conference was, we talked a lot about crosswalks, safety and all that kind of stuff, and I know we've talked a lot about the three crosswalks on Main Street, and again, one of the suggestions that another community used is using, putting where the crosswalk, where the white paint is, is to put bricks, you know, just lay bricks straight all the way across, so it's kind of like a cobblestone effect, but it's only at the crosswalk, and that kind of also is another different type of way to tell people, oh, bricks, oh, this might be for pedestrians versus a white line that is only repainted every, who knows how when, that the state repaints those lines, but at least the bricks, we wouldn't have to rely on the state repainting 52 on those, on those three, three things. I mean, I have no idea how much that would cost, obviously we'd have to get a permit for 52, but it was again just another idea that another community used, I thought maybe we might try that as well.
See if you can actually have lights in the streets as well.
Lights on, on the.
Like the flashing lights that we have, I've seen them actually in the, in the street itself too.
Oh.
In the crosswalks.
Oh, I'm not sure if they would allow that on a state highway.
On a state highway.
On a US highway, right? It's US 52.
Yeah, 52, 1, whatever.
Yeah, I can ask, lights on pedestrians, so how does the board feel about looking into putting bricks on the three pedestrian walks on Main Street? Okay, I'll see if Rocky can find out again, we have to obviously get quotes for all this stuff, but.
One thing I really can be sure of is most of the traffic on Main Street is new to Brookville, you know, coming through, so the more we can do to notify them that they're, I mean, I know they're there, but that's, I live there, but most of the Main Street traffic is Ohio or some of those, the more we can do, the higher likelihood, which breaks their, that community better off, and just with the two sides.
So, the other, yeah, the last, I was gonna talk about this at the end, but we're talking about safety, might as well, so the other thing that NDOT said was that there is just a lot of money that is available for grants for, to develop safety action plans, so there is a grant that is available that is due in August for a traffic safety action plan, and they highly encourage communities to apply for that grant, and I talked to the federal representative that has the money, and she said, look, if you apply, you're gonna get the money, because we have so much of it, because nobody is applying, and I'm like, well, this is the first time I've ever heard of it, so I wanted to see if the board would allow me to look into seeing if we could maybe apply for that grant, the minimum amount of the grant is $100,000 up to $2 million, but again, it's a, it's a safety action plan, so it's kind of like a planning grant, but they tell you all your hotspots in your community or ways you could, different projects that you might want to do in terms of reducing safety on the roadways and on the sidewalks. I can't believe it costs $100,000 as a minimum, so I kind of just wanted to look into that on behalf of Brookville and see if we qualify or if it's worth it, the matches, something, I'm sorry to write that down, the matches, something, but I just wanted to see if you guys would be willing to kind of look into that and think about that for the August application. Wonderful, thank you. It's called Safe Streets and Roads for All, was the NDOT grant, okay, let's do it in August, okay, great. Okay, anything else more about road safety? And I spoke with Mr. Blades, and he's out of town, so he couldn't make it. Next is the Stacy Avieta request.
So, Crystal, the pool manager, has said that she had a friend that has a shaved ice and cake pop stand, business in Liberty, and that she wanted to know if she'd come to the pool and sell items there as well, whatever, whatever you guys would permit, she'd do once a week, every other week, whatever you're willing to do, of course she would have to get her permits in place, but that was her request.
So, the one person that we have allowed to work there is shaved ice as well?
Yeah, flamingo.
And flamingo, and that's all they do is shaved ice?
This one or frozen flamingo?
The one with frozen flamingo?
Yeah, as far as I know, I don't have anything to be honest.
How does everyone feel about that?
I don't know about how I feel about that, but the one that's there now, we need to maybe say something about the way she parks and park them out of the pool, she parks her particular to the parking space, and she takes up about three spots, and that, I mean, I guess we need all the spots we can give with the pool.
Where do you want to?
Uh, maybe, you know, go look and see where we can put her to not take up that many spots. I went by a couple times when she was there, and it was like taking up a good three spots the way she was parked, if she could park maybe on the outer side where there's no parking, you know, going with the parking spots, maybe out.
So, any ideas about the, the new request for a new vendor?
I don't mind, but at some point you can't just let everybody in there, you're gonna be waiting through people going to.
Omar.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, the only thing that.
But I would, but it won't be your own.
The only thing that I would also warn against is that if we do get a lot more, we're really obviously just taking away from our tiny bit of profits that we made on this, on this venture that we, we sell the refreshments, which isn't a lot, I know, but I, I, I mean, I know that my particular goal is to break even with the pool, and I know we're not going to do that, but we need to start to think about other ideas on how we can help them break even, and I'm not sure that this is it, but we have allowed the one, so I just caution for.
They're absolutely reasonable in their prices.
Yeah, so.
I was there, I was there, followed it.
So, I'll take a motion on this request, and if you can on your motion, say if there's any limitations at all, or how many times a week, or, at this point, I think we're having Gina approve, maybe that's something the town manager can approve in the future, but.
I'll make a motion that we approve this and have Rocky or Tim, somebody help them out with where they can park, and we limit it to once a week.
Once a week.
I think in the lady's letter, she said to, she would work with the flamingo to where it don't, it doesn't interfere with one another.
Well, they're gonna have to be telling me when I'm planning on going, so I'll hopefully know, I'll say either when this person was first, or, so are you saying each one up to once a week, or?
Yeah.
So, both. Okay, John made a motion to allow Ms. Avieta and Flamingo Shaved Ice to go once a week at the pool. Is there a second? Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. Next is the employee handbook, I'm assuming we want to go to the table again, everybody?
I'm just keeping it on, starting again.
Okay. And then the infamous DORA ordinance, 2024-10, so what we found in the past since the last meeting is that we had another church that said that they would not support the DORA for Nixies, that is basically shares an alley, so the DORA boundary would basically be there where their, their building starts, so at this point, I think we took out Nixies and we've taken out Eloparo, so the map has gotten a little bit smaller, but I think at this point, we have everybody in agreement, and we also have all the requested permits that are in our application, that if we approve this ordinance tonight, then we can actually submit it to the ATC. ATC, I was gonna say ATF, ATC after this meeting if, if everyone approves.
That pretty much just makes it one side of Main Street.
Pretty, besides the Pioneer and KSC.
Yeah, yeah, the BMW, the vertical remains equals third place, Pioneer, Nixie, Hilltop.
Do, like, when they take these DORA cups, if people don't, what, what stops them from going into another place and getting a new filler cup?
Uh, nothing, I think that's what the dealion is, I think that's what the incentive is.
And they can't go somewhere if they've got a sign of not welcome.
Right, like, like retail whiskey wrangler can have a sign that says no DORA, you cannot go in there with your DORA cup, anybody.
Now, I know Lawrenceburg and Batesville both, under cups, they have, I wonder what you call it, you can scan it, scan it, you can.
Bar code?
A barcode will tell you where the boundaries are and everything, whether you're in it, out of it, what.
I think we can do that, we could just link it to, I mean, we can put all that on our website, and then if they could just, or.
Like a QR code?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can check where you're at, I guess by the cell phone, you're, where you're standing when you're in it or out.
Priscilla, Christine from Main Street has her hand raised.
Perfect, all right, Christine.
Are we ready?
All right, can you hear us?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can hear you, okay, yes, um, yeah, what we do with the cups is to do that type of thing with the QR code, plus we will, I'm planning on when we do the cups, to on one side have the DORA logo, and on the other side have a shortened list of the rules, you know, the laws and stuff in regards to DORA, plus even the state laws regarding open containers and, you know, those kind of things, but to have that covered on the cup as well. And yeah, to answer your question earlier that you had about someone taking a cup into another establishment, they can do that, but it must be empty before they take it into another place that sells alcohol, you cannot take a DORA cup that has any alcohol in it, if you buy it at the Pioneer, you cannot take the Pioneer beer in your DORA cup into Hilltop, but you can take your empty cup in and use that there.
Thank you.
The, what was Under's Restaurant, and there's going to be some new people opening up, would that be able to be indoor, since the church is back there behind Nixies?
If it's with, if, if the DORA boundary is within 200 feet of the church, then they have to get a letter from the church, a letter of support or a letter of.
It's called a letter of no objection.
No objection.
So, how far is that from their back door to?
I think it's within it's.
I think it is, right, directly across a hallway, actually, if the building runs back.
I'm pretty sure it's within, unless the church moves, because they're just on a lease, and that if they move, then it wouldn't be an issue, or they can, again, petition, talk to the church, try to negotiate, and if, if the idea is, okay, if we change our ordinance to say something that they would like, like maybe limiting the hours more, or maybe limiting the hours on Sunday and Wednesday night, which is when they kind of go there, maybe that'd be something that they would, that Nixies would come to us and say, we've got them to agree, but we're asking you to change the, to amend the ordinance to this, and that would be more of just a negotiation that we do to, to move it along and expand the DORA. Anything there? Any other questions?
Do we need to suspend the rules?
If you, yeah, so this is, we, we haven't actually had first reading yet, as we were working through what the churches are gonna do, so this would be first reading, so if you want to adopt it tonight, it would need to be a suspension rule, so this will create a new chapter in Dakota ordinance, this is gonna be chapter 112, which is designated out of the refreshing areas.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules.
John made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? John?
I'll make a motion that we approve the DORA ordinance, expert, at 2024-10. I make a motion that we approve the Dora ordinance, expert, after this 2024-10. 2024-10, if the handbook is mine.
John made a motion to approve the Dora ordinance 2024-10. Is there a second? Is there any more discussion or Christine, do you have anything else?
I'm here, I'm sorry. Christine, do you have anything else?
No, we're good. Once we get this approved, then we will make the move on all the other details with the cups and that kind of stuff. Thank you guys so much.
Well, let's go ahead and wait until we get the application approved.
That's true, right, true, true.
Please wait.
I was still planning though, you know, I'm a planner.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Okay, next one is ordinance 2024-11 for amending chapter 72 parking schedules.
So this ordinance just, we talked about last meeting where it would allow, you know, temporary modifications of the parking schedules?
And that we would do those temporary things?
Yeah, so it would just add, the language that's in yellow, that would just be added to the beginning of chapter 72. And I think it would be wise to make any modifications be done by resolution just so there's a paper chair or something pointing at rather than just a motion at meeting. So it would allow temporary modifications of parking schedules to be done by resolution. And that's all this ordinance is.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
John made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried?
Orderance 2024-11.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-11.
John made a motion to approve ordinance 2024-11. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? And then next is the resolution for what we talked about at the last meeting, resolution 2024-6.
So this resolution, again, we're at 2019. Resolution, 2019.
Did I fix it on there before?
It says 2024-6. Where is the 2019?
Uh, this is, this would authorize the modifications that we discussed last meeting now that ordinance is approved.
So this talks about the municipal lot located by the police department and the 8th Street lot would have no time limit between the hours of 7:00 AM and midnight and then no parking between the hours of midnight and 7:00 AM. That means we'd have to take down the two hour parking signs. And now with this, would we put up new signs or how are we doing these temporary things until we kind of, up to us?
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe, maybe can we put just one sign at the entrance that says the new hours? That way when they roll in, they'll see, okay, the hours, we'll try and make it a little bigger than whatever. Okay, so we'll ask Rocky for one sign at entrance. Okay. Okay. And then all other municipal lots, which really is just the Dollar Store. So at the Dollar Store is still a two hour parking limit, but this is between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. So I guess we could put just a, well, maybe we could put stickers on all the signs that say that? Instead of at the entrance, because it's kind of not a defined entrance. It's kind of, it's kind of wide and kind of, maybe we just put stickers that say 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM? And then-
Might be able to put them on that little, that curb that runs along there. You know, we can go in.
Yeah, that raised curb.
Yeah.
Now it's 8:00 AM until 8:00, 8:00 PM Monday through Friday and then 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday.
Right, and then-
And then no restrictions on Sunday.
Yeah, just trying to figure out the signage. Would you guys prefer a sticker on each of the two hour parkings? Or one sign at the, at the raised curb?
One sign.
Yep.
One sign. Okay, at entrances, okay.
That's pretty much what I'd be, you're coming in from one way.
Supposedly. Uh, the last part is the street parking along Main Street between 3rd and 8th Street shall be limited as follows. It'll be two hour parking on Main Street between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then two hour parking between the hours of 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM on Saturday and then no restrictions on Sunday. So how are we gonna do that? I think the bags, right? We talked about putting bags on the meters. So if we put bags on the meters to let them know that something's changed, how do we let people know it's two hour parking and those are the times? Gina, I think last time, did you say something about putting something on the bag or maybe a big sticker?
The only thing I could figure would be the, I mean, I think it would cost a lot to get bags printed with that, so I think you just put a sticker. Because when we tie the bags on them, they're pretty tight.
Up there.
It's not gonna be shuffled around, so they'll be tight, tight.
So just put a sticker like this? Maybe a larger sticker so people can see-
I would say about, what was that, about four inches across?
Okay. Okay, so we'll put the bags on meters with the stickers. And this doesn't say when it stops and starts. Should we?
What, what does this mean?
Um, like, because I think John said he just wanted to do this during the summer?
Resolution shall take effect as the date passes in Saudi, full force, October 31st.
Where's that? Oh, I'm s- I am so sorry.
That's fine. The, the 31st, October 31st was the date for you guys to-
Just keep reading. Wonderful. Okay, gotcha. Um, okay, that's from basically when we signed it until October 31st and then we'll reevaluate at that time. Any questions about the resolution or issues?
We have to advertise this up here. The resolution stands as an ordinance?
No.
No, so when we get the bags put on, the stickers on there, that's when they can start.
Right.
This is resolution number red here. Uh, 2024-6, I'm gonna get Gina's comment here. I make a motion that we approve resolution 2024-6.
Which is a resolution establishing temporary parking schedules. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Those two ordinances? Okay, next is the new municipal building conference room. No, the table.
We have a small thing here.
Thank you.
We got a table.
Hey, my queen's over there too, so. Okay, next is the new municipal building conference room. So we talked about this last time. Does anybody have any discussion or any new regulations about having a conference room in the south area of the corner of the building? Instead of in the kitchen or the break room or the cabinet room?
I, I've decided to go with the new room and I think it's, you take that room from our meeting room to do this, but I talked to Gina and she needs storage space in that closet. So I go with Gina's wishes on this and I go for the conference room that you want, this new room.
Um, that means we would have to build a wall and get, I guess, another quote from Todd Rayblon, how much more that would, that would cost? Um, anybody else? I mean, I-
I think we need to keep it in the cabinet room. I know, I know Gina needs storage, but the room headed out the hallway with the glass, that is climate controlled. It has-
The room with the glass?
Yes.
Which room?
Is headed out to the bigger area in the back on the right hand side. I don't know what you want to call it.
In the garage?
Yeah.
Oh, the garage room.
It is climate controlled. I, I just think, taken away from the town hall, there's a window there. You're either gonna have to go before it or after it. There's a window on that.
Oh.
Your wall would have to go before it, which limits your width. Or you're gonna have to go after it, which takes more space into the town hall.
Well, I, one thing I did learn is I asked Todd Thackeray, who designed the, did the design, the architect or whatever, and I said, what if we took that smaller area out and put a wall? And I said, well, first I asked, what's the capacity of the big room? And he said 49 people. And then I said, what if we take out that smaller area, how does that reduce the capacity? And he said it's still 49 people. You can still fit 49 people in that room, there's no problem. And so I thought, you know, 49 people is a lot of people to be able to fit in that room. You know, I know that John said that a lot of our meetings, you know, there's a lot of people. Obviously I disagree with that because I feel like there are some meetings that definitely do draw a crowd, which is good. We want to accommodate them, but I think the majority of the meetings, a room with 49, I mean, I think the, the room itself would be, I think, where Danny's sitting in terms of space and I think that would be plenty of room for lots of seats for people. So I don't think it would diminish what we do because we're such a small community.
Yeah, but once, once you put it in our area to sit at, that shrinks that down.
It does. It does. I understand. You have a point. You do have a point there. I know. I just feel very, very, very comfortable in establishing a professional conference room. Um, we're about to go through some training sessions with, I work on software and we're all gonna have to huddle around one computer. It just would be so much easier to just plug something into a TV and in addition, what I talked to Gina about is that I was like, well, maybe we can just start, you know, putting storage cabinets just all over the walls, which would not look as, as nice as it would if she had that four foot storage area inside the kitchen basket, basket, um, that's right, not basket room, cabinet room. So that would be at least out of, out of sight and if she's got stuff in there, it's the break room. Nobody cares. We don't have to have the public in there. Um, so anyway, that was my, my thing, so.
Gina, how do you feel about the glassed-in office space to be for storage? Do you, do you know-
Is that when you walk out the door and it's to the right?
Yes.
I mean, whatever you guys will give me, I, I mean, nobody, I've got my stuff.
Which would you rather have?
As far as?
For storage, the closet in the cabin room or the glassed-in ice cold office, glassed-in area?
It's where the Winter Wonderland stuff is.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm, I'm fine with whatever, but I do, I will say a conference room is essential for what we do now. I think it's, it's out of the times. When the town manager come in, I think in a more professional setting, it'll be a lot easier to deduct, to deduct those new fees. So I will do whatever I need to do with storage, but I do think conference room would be beneficial to us.
Outside the cabin room, prefer?
I would prefer, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm being picky a little bit.
Dan?
I have to say too, having a large crowd is the exception. It's not, in my experience, it's the exception, it's not the rule. And you can always, if you know there's something contentious where you expect a large crowd, you can always, you know, assuming you get 48 hours notice changing, maybe you'll take some of the larger, if needed.
Do we need to make a motion?
Someone needs to make a motion.
I will make that motion, that the new conference room is where the walls now are.
Uh, Dan made a motion that we create the conference room in the southeast corner of the building and build a wall and a door. It would be helpful.
Be good.
Um, is there a second?
I'll say it.
John seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? John, can you talk to Todd about the law and let us know? I guess we'll vote on that at the next meeting. Thank you. Uh, next-
Do we have to vote on it?
Do we have to vote, yeah.
Can't we just find out and then submit the information? It would be okay to get?
For the, do we have to vote on the quote for the wall and a door? Or is, is, is this vote good enough to say?
It's not gonna take a high price.
Yeah, so, so Dan's motion was to accept the modification of the contract. Yeah, I mean, you just need to talk in the contract.
Yeah.
Tell them to add the quote. Perfect.
Thank you.
And next is new business, the blower quote for the wastewater plant. Tim?
We had the blower, the north blower set off, have it looked at and it's just completely worn out. So we have a quote for a new blower and this is, this is with installation due to $12,562. Um, I tried to get them to call Starwell and they said that they were having trouble locating, a roof blower, that they couldn't locate it, but they said they were between $11,000 and $12,000, which is in line with this quote. That was not installed, so they didn't even send a quote for it, so. I only have the one quote from Indiana Pump Works for $12,562 and that is installed.
Have you used these people before?
Yes, yeah, we have.
I make a motion that we approve the quote.
John made a motion to approve the blower quote for $12,562 from Indiana Pump Works. Is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Oh. I wrote on the front, I'm sorry. Just sign on the back.
Yeah.
Sorry. Next is the CERPC contract for parking lot project. I've got C, I'm sorry. CIC surveying quote for electrical and water line easement.
So we're still working with the legal description for the easement for Armyport, for the water line that was related to the course that we pump water from. We, Mr. C and myself, we tried a couple of different options. I even got the number for the guy who put in the line, but he never got back with me. So Mr. C has contacted a company to help them locate that electric line. They have the capability to do that. So he included it in his quote. So his total quote, including their services, is $6,500. So I assume that will get us the underground detectives to locate the electric line and then legal descriptions served it for.
And we need this because it's a requirement for USAC to get the 30-year easement that just so happened to expire in August of 2020, I'm sorry, April of 2024. So we are behind the times.
Acquiring certified legal descriptions for the easement.
So this is a $15,000 unexpected 30-year expense. Good times. So this is a fifteen thousand dollar unexpected thirty-year expense. Um, good times. Any questions about the SEAC quote?
I make a motion, will we approve the quote?
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, do you want me to sign, Gina or you? This is client.
Um, can you go ahead and sign this, please?
Yes.
Next is the SERPCY contract for parking lot project. So this is the formal agreement for SERPCY to provide the administrative tasks for the parking lot grant. Although they have already been doing all the work for the grant so far. Uh, they don't sign the contract until the release of funds, and that should be happening very soon. And so that's why we're seeing the contract now, even though they've been working on this project for several months. Um, and Jody Comers should be on the line if you guys have any questions about this contract. But this, um, is in line with the initial budget that we put forward to Oprah for the grant money. And this is eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the grant administration, five thousand for labor standards, five thousand for involvement review, uh, for not to exceed fee of eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, but again, that was all in the initial budget for the project.
I make a motion, will we approve this quote?
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Sure.
Rick seconded. Are there any questions for Jody?
I just, this kind of, this is the parking lot.
This is the parking lot, yes, sir.
So it's unrelated, really. Is there any plans for phase two? Because you can't drive through there with your softball.
Because what?
Because you can't drive through there with your softball, dangerous, complicated. And, um, we have a side of that. So is there been any discussion about where we go from here?
About additional, so this, um, and I don't know how many-
I know the top five.
No, no, it's fine. I don't know how many cars normally fit or how, you know, if they just pull it, whatever, and it was five feet between me and the next car. Uh, but this lot is going to have, I believe, ninety-eight parking spots, which I think will force people to park between the lines, which I think will fit more cars than we're used to seeing. So maybe, you know, having, you know, those lines will fit more cars in it. Maybe that might alleviate, but in terms of a second phase, there hasn't been any talk about any additional. But if you have some ideas, we can definitely-
Well, no, I just wanted to, because it continues to grow, which is good.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm opposed to that, but, I mean, if you try to drive through there, we either need to do it one way, in my opinion, enforce everybody, because you can't pass on your softball.
You're talking about the main road? You can't pass?
Right.
Oh, because there's people parked on the main road?
That's right.
Because the parking lot itself is going to be one-way, one-way and all.
But I wondered if you do the whole, any one-way, just that, that would be-
I mean, whatever the council wants to do, absolutely. Like I said, any idea is good, and if you have more ideas, we can start writing them down and developing them as projects and then find some grant money out there to make it happen. I just don't know what the idea is. You want to put more spaces somewhere else?
I just wondered if that was going to be a discussion.
Yeah.
Before I, I mean, kind of, well, this is something.
What do they do with the car show?
Hmm?
What do they do with the car show? Do they make it a one-way then?
July.
When they have the car shows? I've never been down there.
I think, I'll be somewhere, I don't know.
Is that-
I think so, but I don't know about.
No.
I've never noticed a one-way with the car shows. It's kind of just, do it every, look, find a spot.
They're sharing themselves.
I mean, they park all over in the grasses.
It's worse, but-
Um, uh, Jody, is Jody online? Does she have anything to add?
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry.
Jody, are you on? Are you on? I don't see her, they weren't even-
Okay, that's fine. Um, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the salary ordinance amendment twenty-twenty-four dash twelve. So this is a change that we, um, are making for the town manager's base pay rate. And we're changing it to, uh, two thousand three hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents weekly. And then-
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly? My bad. Bi-weekly. I can't read. And also, this is a correction from what we decided at the last meeting for golf course laborers for-
I did not include them, sorry. That was my mistake.
We made the, uh, vote anyway to increase, um, I think a quarter, a fifty, I can't remember. Uh, these are the corrections, and those are it, Gina?
Correct.
Okay. Um, any questions on those changes?
I do want to mention, so the new hires of the laborers, that, that first, the first year experience, it wasn't twelve thirty-five capacity, because we did that for the previous ones. So I had to start with that, for the first year experience, and then it was a quarter for the next two.
So I think this is good, so now when we hire new people, they know what to expect, they know what's happening one year to the next. We want to definitely keep them there, uh, for the three years if we can. And I think this is, just being more transparent with, with, and treating everyone the same. Is there any, are there any questions about the changes to the salary ordinance? Any discussion?
What was their original, what did you offer that town manager originally?
Um, originally, it was two thousand, uh, bi-weekly? So this is just an increase?
I make a motion, will we approve the amendment?
John made a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twelve. Is there a second?
Mr. Seac, pressure.
Uh, sorry.
So I gotta suspend the rules?
Yes.
I make a motion to suspend the rules?
John made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Rick seconded. All in favor?
I'm with Dan.
You have, if, if you don't, um, vote with us, it's, it has to be unanimous, then we can't sign it.
I'm with you.
So, all in favor, Dan? Okay, so four to zero, all in favor. Uh, go ahead, John, you want to make the motion?
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the salary ordinance.
John made a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twelve, amended salary. Is there a second?
I'll second the challenge.
Rick seconded. I mean, uh, Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. So we have a signature, please.
All those that are on Zoom watching this, my, uh, please.
Okay, and that's all we have. Uh, does anybody have anything else?
I was asked after the last meeting, uh, when we turned it over to the crowd, the audience, that we also turned it over to the Zoom audience for any comments, questions.
Okay. So in the past, we haven't allowed, uh, comments?
Well, they, you never ask them. You just ask here, not there.
Well, I meant even, because they type in some pretty derogatory things on Zoom.
Well, some people have some questions on Zoom. I just imagine if there was a crowd here or somebody was upset about something, they'd say something derogatory too. I'm a big boy, I can tell.
About your appearance?
Yeah. Hey, everybody said derogatory things about my appearance a lot.
How does the council feel about, um, accepting comments and remarks from people on Zoom?
I absolutely agree. That's a big way we're going to know if we're doing Zoom right or wrong.
Dan? I'm actually not in favor either. If we can kind of table this and see if Curtis comes back and maybe he can help break the tie.
Or be up to Gina, too.
It's only if I have to throw the mute button.
You're sitting there.
I think they've had experience in this, that as they've grown up.
What?
And I guess I, and I realize only to say, um, you know, they need to come to the meeting if they want to. Need part of it. That's just, I don't know, bad.
I still bring it to school.
Okay, let's bring it up next time, maybe when Curtis is here.
All right.
Do you want to turn on the light?
If you don't mind, yeah. Thank you. Um, anything else?
Well, I, I, in discussion with someone yesterday-
Can you talk to them?
About, do we have a water problem up at the, uh, quote, this front line, some things up there? I heard that in a discussion yesterday.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Do we have a water problem at the golf course?
Straight close, yeah. Yes, we do. Um, it's been, it's been working right now. It may be fixed tomorrow, I'm not sure. Um, the, uh, actually, the new irrigation line we put in under the road, um, we think that it, it wasn't blocked properly with the fence. We think that it may have expanded enough to blow the line apart, so we have to, we're not to dig the road up or anything, but we have to take it apart and basically put it back together.
Well, I heard that, and I thought this is not the, the time that you want. And then we drive, because I don't know where it is.
Right, and that's why, uh, I talked to Charlie this morning about it, and he's already had his guys working on it. And I think, I told him whatever he needs, it is done, because I realize it's odd, dry, and we've got it done. So we're working on our booking tomorrow when it's fixed.
Can we do uni or does it board as far as financially? If they need money to do this, can they do it or get it?
Um, I-
But I have to come to the meeting and ask permission.
I don't think that we're going to need any kind of financial help or anything. It's mainly we need labor up there right now, is just to dig it up and get it done. Um, I think we've got the parts we need. Uh, it's just a matter of actually getting in there and doing it.
Well, I heard that, and I thought, you know, I'd, uh-
Unfortunately, the, uh- But we're, we're working on it, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Rick? Do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to, uh, Amy Lindsey for putting on, for the pumping stations for people. I'd like to thank Gina for putting it on the town. Terry put it on the, on the police. There are quite a few people that's been tagged in that, to nowhere to go and stuff.
Oh, great. It's a post?
Uh-
Is it a Facebook post?
No, it was, it was something that was in the county, and I just contacted Amy, and she had put it on Facebook.
Okay.
Where she, me and her, like, met at the same time as me asking her and her put it on there.
Okay.
And then I noticed that Terry had been tagged in, so I asked him to put it on his, and Gina put it on the town.
Okay.
So I'd just like to say thank you. And the only other thing I had was where they're tearing up the roads for this gas line. I don't know if what they're leaving is the final product. And the blacktop is, you know, this deep inside there, pretty good ridge. Are they planning on filling that up? Are they going to set over or?
Um, they've got the base down, but they're going to come back and finish to, to level everything up and, and finish it smooth. Yeah, it's kind of, it's not rough in all those areas right now, but it will be smoothed out.
And it's going to go to the top of ballpark hill, right?
Yes, uh, it's supposed to go to, like, almost the end of the, to the, uh, grandstand. It's at the top of the hill, but I've noticed that they had placed it a little bit further, so it may go down like, uh, that Core Avenue.
Yeah.
Because that's where they're, they have a, the gas company has cluster valves right there, so, and I've seen a plate with that. So, um, I actually talked to, uh, Aaron about that to see if they changed the, the distance of that. But originally, it was planned to go right to the top of the hill and that was it. And it's still making the case that they may just be doing some work on the valves or something to other here. I'll check.
And then after they finish this, they'll be going down to Dan's house, um, on, uh, Webber Lake.
That'll slow them down. Let them run into the water.
Good times. What else you got, Rick? John? Derek, do you have something?
I think Dan wanted me to come here and get some questions for you.
Well, we, Todd, we had an agenda item that Mr. Blades was coming to discuss, an issue, the complaint, I don't know where that takes us. But I just wanted you to represent, so that was a question. I mean, we've gone up with some proposals, uh, that were four or five proportions, so I just wanted you to hear what the discussion, not be boring.
Well, I liked everything that you guys have said with, with that. Uh, last month alone, there was a hundred and six traffic stops in town. A lot of them, uh, when we started to enforce on St. Mary's Road, was over two months ago. And we've spoken with Mr. Blades several times, and we are enforcing that area heavily right now. Uh, if you have scanners, you'll hear people being pulled over and stopped. Um, does the town want any more some way for me as far as, uh, sitting someone over there for, like, hours? Do you think-
Mr. Blades suggested that you park a police vehicle in his driveway for, for different, different, different periods of time. And if, since we have, um, you know, several extra right now, I thought that might be, I forgot to mention that before, but now that you say that, I mean, not, you know, full-time, but, I mean, I know that, you know, other departments do do that sometimes, is park it in different places and, and then, you know, take it out, just to mess with people, I mean, just to, so-
No, just as an old car, police car, they said different ways.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's like, to, to make people think they're about to get, I mean, that's, I mean, if he offered it, I-
So one of the strategies that we're using over there is we're placing our officers in different locations so that when people are driving over there, they don't know exactly where they're going to be sitting. So I might put them in the cemetery for a couple of days so they see that. So when they come into the road areas, they're going to look to see if they see that officer there. I want them to think that. Then we're going to put you in someplace else because we want to see if that person is doing that and then driving faster. And then we're going to pull you over because you're speeding, because we're at a different location. So we're doing these little locations, and we're stopping people, uh, regularly, and we're having these conversations with them. Uh, we are giving them the opportunity to do the right thing, or it's going to come down to strictly enforcing it and just non-stop writing tickets until everybody in that area that's coming through there gets the message. Uh, we're trying to be nice about it, but yet we're letting people know we're enforcing this area. So I think that it is working. Um, you could have a hundred, what's that?
A lot of people.
You can have a hundred people drive through there. You could have a hundred people drive through there, ten of them are speeding. Is that a problem, or, or is it just people not obeying the law? That's the issue with having, we're not getting a lot of repeat. Some of those that are coming through are slowed down, and the other ones that are stopping. One of the things that I tell the officers, especially new officers, is officer's discretion. Pull them over, run their plates and their license, check their records, make sure they've got no points on their license, have a conversation, see if the warning will be. And then if you pull them over again, then, you know, there's an issue. Um, we're- Um, we're, we're trying to do this tactically without the least amount of complaints, but yet take Mr. Blades' complaint very seriously because I do. I spoke with him on the phone also. I told him we will be hitting that area. We have been hitting that area and we're continuing to hit that area. Same way with Weber's Lane and a couple of other places. We're still hitting those areas in different locations. Uh, when we get a complaint, we look into those and we do enforce everything around. If it's from traffic, from a stop sign to a traffic light to speeding, we're going to enforce it and we're going to look at those areas and we're going to do our job. And I think those guys have did a really good job, in my opinion. Uh, if you're listening to your scanners, you're going to hear that. Uh, our biggest problem right now, as far as I'm concerned, is I hear there's a semi coming down Reservoir Hill every thirty, forty minutes. Um, from, you know, they pass that sign, Causeway Road, and drive all the way down to get the, the Reservoir Road and we're getting those now. Uh, so we're dealing with that too. But I'm open for any suggestions from the board if you think that there are another way of handling it. I'm open for suggestions.
So is it possible to put a, I mean, put a vehicle in his, in his driveway for certain periods?
Does his driveway have that fence where his yard and then there's a fence that goes in there, right?
He's got, he's got two different driveways.
Okay.
He's got a drive, a regular driveway on, I'm not sure, it's on this side of his house and then he's got a shorter driveway with a fence, a gate. I don't know, it looks like he maybe uses a gradual driveway more than any. Might go park right there in the driveway.
Well, here's, here's the problem. We're airing this out and everybody who sees that car parked there now knows it's just a car being parked there with no officer inside.
Well, they don't know that. You just said you, your officers park in different spots.
But not in people's yards. We don't park in people's yards.
Maybe, maybe like sit in different places, like where you.
Yeah, moving around.
I will figure, I will, I will look at a place over there and see if I can find a location. Obviously, if we park it in his yard, I'll park it in his yard. Um, I don't know if that will do anything for him. It might. I'm willing to try that. If I park it in a different location, I would have to have the consent of wherever property, if the town doesn't own it, to allow that to be parked there. So, and there's a lot of stuff inside of a police car. A lot of those dummy cars you see are just dummy cars where they don't have all the stuff inside the car to get vandalized. So, but I'm open for, or I'll look at it.
Concern about the cemetery or down across from where the park, I guess.
I mean, where the, where the houses are.
It's, it's that little dip.
Before you get to the.
Before you get to the cemetery.
I'm telling you, it was really, if they take that curb out and they ditch the curb out over there, it's a virtual challenge for people to see how far they go.
Well, I've had people actually go up on the hill where you live at. He's, I mean, one of my first calls with that when Phil Wehorder was the chief, first night he worked with me, first car that we dealt with was a car up on top of your curb right there that went up there and flipped over.
Safety ramp.
Maybe we could put a stop sign, change the curb and put two stop signs.
Did, did you say the one control should or should be, they give it to you free?
Yes, sir. For four weeks. Four weeks.
If, if that's something that's, we can find information, that may be, they just don't.
I'll see when they're.
That is, that is something, idea of just how far we need to go.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
It's just a bad location where when you come up there and you dip down that hill and then you got that curb and they live right there, it's just a really bad location.
Most of them houses, at best is twenty feet from the street, from the road. So if something goes wrong, it's going to go wrong.
I like, uh, the, the sign idea, putting the signs, uh, enforcing that and, um, the strips, that might be, uh, very helpful in that area if it's not very loud. I mean, if it gets to a point where it's too loud, then we're going to be dealing with that too. And I don't know the cost of those.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I ask you, if that was free, we could, we could start right there and just see what it needs to be.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just had a couple of things. So first of all, uh, we did, uh, find a town manager and we did offer her the job and she did accept it. And her name is Brenda Todd Fennell and she is from the Connersville Liberty area-ish. And she will be starting on the first of July. So that's pretty exciting for us. This is going to be our first town manager and I just appreciate everybody, you know, figuring this out and going through all the interviews and think it's going to be great. Um, one thing is that what, what we've done here the past couple of weeks is developed a Yelp, Google and TripAdvisor profiles for our two recreational areas, the golf course and the pool. And so we're trying to, hmm, not work. Work, look into that. Um, trying to treat those two areas as like businesses, part of recreation, part of out of towners. What they do is they go on Yelp or at Google, hey, what's fun things to do in Brookfield? We want them to see Brookhill Golf Course, the pool. So, um, we went ahead and set up profiles on those things and hopefully that will help with more reviews from people that actually do visit, um, and do that. So that's kind of one thing for business development. Uh, and I'd also like to announce that the McCullough Hyde, uh, grant that we applied for, for the Sportsplex complex, uh, we applied for 25,000, uh, but we did get five. And so that's, um, more, more money that goes into the pot for the Sportsplex complex and that's added to the 10,000 from the foundation as well. So that's good news. And I think that's it for now. And are there any, uh, questions from the public or you guys got anything more? Dan, come on up.
Well, I didn't know I did as I got here.
No problem.
Some of the things I heard talked about, um, I live out that way, St. Mary's, and I've seen several people pulled, I come in two, sometimes three times a day at the town. I've seen several people pulled over out there and I've heard other people kind of both frankly complaining about it, but kind of like, oh, they're, they're, why all of a sudden there's enforcement? So I will say from my perspective, because I've seen it and other people I've heard talking about it. So it is making a difference from what I see just because people are now more aware of it. Um, the other thing on those rumple strips, some idea you probably want to consider is, um, that the, the adhesive tape glass type, glass stands about it, but you know, the reflectiveness from those lines on the roads or from glass beads that are in the glue. But anyway, they make a tape that you can put down to like a tape rumple strip. So it's not as loud, it's not as expensive, um, and that kind of thing. Uh, and at nighttime, it's reflective from the headlights if you get the ones with the glass beads in it. But it, it's really just like, of course, it enrolls and it's installed in a certain manner. Um, and it's industrial adhesive and you get it hot and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, you can install that and that would give you rumple strips. As someone who drives that, if you put a rumple strip right after, basically right where the cemetery stops and the houses start, just somewhere right before there, that'll make a bigger difference than it will if you put it all the way down by Burghurst because by the time you get down here, it, they probably sped back up. And then the one on the other side, but, so if somebody drives through there a lot, there's that. And then I think it might be a, an option that you could consider for Main Street if you get the state of Illinois, if you're talking about those bricks. If, if, if they don't notice it till they're already on the walkway, it might be a little too late. Of course, if you could put some of those taped rumple strips leading into the walkway from each direction for those three locations, that might be a solution for there too. So just an idea.
Do you have any idea how those hold up with snowplows?
I've seen them on other state highways, um, and, and they seem to hold up really well. Um, a lot of the yellow lines on our state highways and the white lines, that's what they are. They're actually just tape. They, they get taped down and, and so they're, that's what they're made for. It's not like you think sticker and on a road, how's that going to work? But that's what, that's what a lot of those are.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no.
Thank you. I shouldn't keep making deals. It seems like every, every way you come into Brookfield, it's speed to the block. I mean, every street you drive down in Brookfield, it's speed. Is there any way we can come up with 30 mile an hour or 25 and make that Brookfield speed limit? So there is no question about, you know, you know, how fast we're supposed to be, you know, it's 20 so far of Fairfield Avenue and it turns to 30 and then you get out there, it's 55 a little bit and it's 40. I know it's a Gately State Highway, but the town, can we come up with a, let's say, a number and just say that's town's speed limit?
I mean, I think it might depend on what street, if you have some ideas on what street we could, you know, standardize.
Whatever we decide, I'm on the median heavy street.
I'm not, I'm not positive on this. I'm with Terry, you back me up or if you can give me some information. I, I kind of thought at one time that, uh, the speed limit in Brookfield residential areas was 25 miles an hour. I, I, I thought of that in some books, but I don't know if it is anymore. But I thought it used to be 25 miles an hour.
But I don't think that may just help some people can be taken out of, I would care if it was a universal speed.
I mean, yeah. Do you guys want to, want to think about that or?
Um, the city grew up and had 25 mile an hour period, that's what it was in town. Whether it was a four lane road or what, it was 25 mile an hour.
What do you think, Terry?
I'm open for suggestions. Uh, I just know when you're on like Main, you can go down Main and it changes in different locations, which that was kind of weird to me too. Then you've got the ones that come in from St. Mary's Road where that changes. So then I think you guys were having the discussion where down there in Teaker Town with that speed coming in there too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it does get confusing. Um, I just don't think we can go, uh, higher than whatever the state requires, but I'm pretty sure we can go lower, uh, in, in that situation. But the town attorney would have to.
So the, so the 1067 says 20 mile per hour in any business district and 25 mile per hour in any residence district. Because what's on the, what's in ordinance?
So is a business district the same thing as zoned for business?
I don't. I don't know if business district is defined.
Okay. Because I'm pretty sure they don't go 20 up my hill. I think they go about 40.
Not up that hill. That one.
Both. Like they can't make it up the hill. Okay, if there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
John made a motion. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming.